Members. Welcome to this session. This session is on housing. I welcome Secretary for Transport and Housing as his team to come to our meeting. To facilitate um counting of a number of members who would like to speak. Um I will invite the members to raise your hands. For orderly arrangements, I will invite the staff to clear all the raised hand indications. Please clear the indications. Now, members who would like to speak, please press the raised hand indicators on Zoom. Now, I will invite the Secretary for Transport and Housing to present his PowerPoint. Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, housing has always been an issue of great concern to the people of Hong Kong. The government strives to increase housing supply and reach the housing ladder. And when the housing supply is not yet available, explore ways to optimize existing resources to support families waiting for public rental housing or PRH and living in inadequate housing. With the greatest determination, the government has been actively identifying land for housing development in a persistent manner. The government has already identified about three hundred and fifty hectares of land required for providing some three hundred and thirty thousand public housing units for the coming ten year period. Which can adequately meet the demand of about three hundred thousand, three hundred and one thousand public housing units in the about ten year period. Of the three hundred and thirty thousand public housing units mentioned above, more than one hundred thousand units are scheduled for completion in the first five year period. To meet the future challenges, especially the search of flex production in the second five year period, the Housing Authority or HA will carry out the pre-construction preparatory tasks, including planning briefs formulation, detailed designs, site investigations and tender invitations in parallel with the government's land production processes, such as the construction works can be commenced as soon as possible after these sites are handed over to the HA. In order to achieve the principle of optimizing each piece of land to increase flag production and to provide additional welfare and car parking facilities, we will leverage on the site's development's potential by, for example, constructing podiums, basements and even high-rise buildings exceeding forty stories. The HA will adopt the most suitable designs for each site to shorten the construction time and to facilitate phased completion of the projects. The HA has been actively promoting the adoption of modular integrated construction or MIC. Five domestic blocks have been selected for the adoption of MIC. Besides, the HA has identified additional projects suitable for MIC application in the new development areas. Such as Tongchung and the North Metropolis with preliminary estimation that about twenty thousand flags can be provided upon completion. To ensure site safety and building quality, the HA has been introducing innovative technologies to enhance productivity and expedite housing development. Such efforts include extending the application of building information modeling or BIM, utilizing mobile devices and mobile applications for site supervision, introducing construction robotics and exploring the adoption of electrical and mechanical MIC in terms of building services. The HA will adopt the design and build or D and B procurement model in suitable projects to cover the anticipated increase in housing production. With contractors undertaking design and construction at the same time, the resources and expertise of the construction industry can be leveraged to further enhance the entire construction workflow. The first D and B public housing projects in Ku Tong North involving about four thousand three hundred and thirty units will be tendered out in June two thousand twenty-two. The next project in Tuen Moon will be tended tended out in December two thousand twenty-two involving some two thousand three hundred and fifty units. The government is committed to enriching the housing ladder to meet the needs of different types of families. We have revised the pricing policy for home ownership scheme or HOS flags in year two thousand eighteen by delinking the selling prices from the property prices in the private property markets and price GSH or green subsidized housing tax on HOS basis. We have also implemented a number of measures to help the public achieve home ownership, including the introduction of start homes for Hong Kong residents or SH pilots projects and the regularization of GSH and white form secondary market scheme. About eight thousand nine hundred HOS flags have been put up for sale in the first quarter of this year. Validating is expected to be held in the second quarter and the flag selection will commence in the fourth quarter. Besides, it is expected that about four thousand seven hundred GSH units will be put up for sale in the second half of this year. The provisional discount rate for HOS two thousand twenty-two is forty-nine percent. The highest since the resumption of the sale of HOS HOS flags in year two thousand fourteen. The lowest selling price of a flag under HOS two thousand twenty-two is one million and two hundred and forty thousand dollars. The professional discount rate for GSH two thousand twenty-two is fifty-nine percent, the highest since the launch of GSH in two thousand sixteen. The lowest selling price of a flag under GSH two thousand twenty-two is seven hundred ninety thousand dollars. The government also continues to take forward SH pilots projects to help address the homeownership aspirations of higher income families who are not eligible for HOS but cannot afford the private housing. Following the first SH pilot project, that is E Residence, the government is taking forward three other SH projects which can provide over three thousand units in total. When the public housing supply is not yet fully available in an effort to improve the livelihood of families waiting for PRH for a prolonged period of time and living in inadequate housing, the government has implemented three breakthrough measures in recent years, which include spearheading transitional housing, implementing tenancy control on subdivided units or SDUs and launching the cash allowance trial scheme or CATS. On transitional housing, the government has further adjusted upward the supply targets to twenty thousand units. The Transport and Housing Bureau has been actively spearheading and facilitating various transitional housing projects launched by NGOs. As of March of this year, the government has identified sufficient land for providing over eighty thousand transitional housing units, of which over over two thousand three hundred units are in operation. About four thousand three hundred units are under construction and expected to be completed for operation within this year. About eleven eleven thousand five hundred units with advanced work launched are expected to be completed in phases for operation since year two thousand twenty-three. Projects involving about seven hundred units are currently under in-depth study. To tie in with the above initiatives, the government has proposed to raise the amounts of funding under the funding scheme to support transitional housing projects by NGOs from eight point three billion dollars to eleven point six billion dollars. The increase of three point three billion dollars in commitments will be sought in the context of the appropriation bill two thousand twenty-two. Furthermore, the Commission on Poverty has earlier approved a grant of ninety-five million dollars from the Community Care Fund for implementing a pilot scheme to subsidize using about eight hundred suitable rooms in hotels and guest houses with relatively low occupancy rates as transitional housing through NGOs. Since the pilot scheme was open for application in April two thousand twenty-one, as at March of this year, about ninety-two million dollars has been granted to eight projects, which will provide a total of about seven hundred thirty units. Part four A of the landlord and tenant consolidation ordinance to implement tenancy control on SDUs came into force on the twenty-second of January this year. It provides protection of protection to SDU tenants in various aspects, which include providing four-year security of tenure for the tenants, restricting the rates of rent increase on tenancy renewal and prohibiting landlords from overcharging tenants on public utility charges, et cetera. The Rating and Valuation Department or the LVD has set up a dedicated section responsible for the implementation of the legislation, including promoting public awareness of the new regulatory regime, handling inquiries, providing free advisory and meditative services to landlords and tenants on tenancy matters, endorsing the notice of tenancy or Form AR two submitted by landlords, collating and preparing to publish the reported rents data and taking enhancement enforcement actions as appropriate, et cetera. The government has engaged NGOs to set up six district service teams. They have been reaching out to the grassroots scenes early January of this year through various publicity activities such as street counties, home visits, promotion websites, talks and briefing sessions, et cetera, and their connection connection networks to supplement the efforts of LVD in promoting the new legislation at district level. Raising public awareness of the new regulatory regime and handling general inquiries. The government has also engaged an NGO to establish and to manage a web-based information portal for sharing of information on tenancy control on SDUs for publicity and education purpose. The government's launched the free year CATS in late June two thousand twenty-one to provide cash allowance to eligible PRH general applicants or GA households who are not living in public housing, not receiving the comprehensive social security assistance or CSA and have waited for PRH for more than three years but have not been offered the first PRH allocation. With a view to relieving the pressure on livelihood of grassroots families, which have waited for PRH allocation for a prolonged period of time. As at the end of February this year, we have dispersed cash allowances to about sixty-nine thousand eight hundred eligible PRH GA households. Chairman, I appreciate members' concerns on housing matters. My team and I are pleased to answer their questions. Thank you. Thank you, Secretary. Now we have nine members who have raised their hands. I will read out the names. Ms. Doreen Kong, Mr. Bu Tang, Mr. Tong Tony J, Mr. Michael Tian, Mr. Edward Lau, Mr. Stanley Ng, Dr. Wong Yuen Shan, Dr. Wendy Hong and Mr. Jeffrey Lam. Five minutes each. If you have any follow-up questions, please raise your hands again and you will be given a second round. Please keep the time. First, Ms. Doreen Kong.
Uh, thank you, Chair. The first question is on zero seven, that is my own question. In terms of transitional housing, Secretary, what is the role played by the government? Besides spearheading the project, does the government play the roles of monitoring and coordinating? The government has spent sixteen point six billion dollars on transitional housing. In the reply of zero zero seven, you said that you don't have the figures for families that are waiting to be allocated a transitional housing unit. So I'm worried about the government's facilitator facilitators role on this. Now, in terms of the occupancy rates of transitional housing units that are completed, the government has, the secretary has given us a link. So I click the hyperlink. However, on the website, there is no breakdown of occupancy rates for transitional housing units or the types of applicants. So is there a platform telling us the occupancy rates for each transitional housing projects? Is application still open and what is the eligibility criteria? So that's applicants won't have to look information up individually. Now, at PH, PHB Asia zero zero eight for completed housing units, transition housing units, one to two person units account. There are three hundred and one, one to two person units and only thirty-five of three to six person units. Why is there a difference? Is it because of less demand for three to six person units? And lastly, at PHB zero one nine. In the secretary's reply, you mentioned that in the second five-year period, the delivery of public housing units would be affected by many factors. There may be delay. Back in January, I and Ms. Dr. Priscilla Leung and Dr. Wong Yuen Shan have put questions in terms of mere completion public housing estates. We ask about the progress of the public housing estates. Now it is April and we still don't have a reply. So can the secretary tell us the progress, the completion progress of the public housing estates?
Thanks very much, Ms. Kong. That's my colleague can supplement first. It's a ten. Chairman, thank you. In one of our replies, uh, THBO three in the appendix there. We have already enumerated all the projects. And then you have the utilization rate, the rental level and the the tenancy and so on. In fact, for these transitional housing, we do have all the information there on the web. All you need to do is to click on the link to find out what projects are being rented and and people can take the pics there. As to the number of people, we look at the sizes of the individual projects and the philosophy of operating these projects on the part of the operators. In the new projects, we have two thousand four hundred two P units and one thousand three hundred also three P units and all these statistics are shown on the web. And we do have the annual report submitted to the panel. Chairman, I defer to Mr. Lo to talk about the public housing construction. Chairman, thank you. Thanks very much, Madam Kong. In the coming few years, two, 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 three, two, two, four, two, six. All these projects are underway at the construction site. For the closer ones, at twenty-two, twenty-three, the work has already commenced for some time. So you can see that in this year, they will be coming on stream progressively. For those coming on stream in twenty-five, twenty-six, some of them are having the foundation work being undertaken and thereafter, we will carry out the superstructure work. Madame Kong also referred to the years further along. And we're doing the infrastructure and site formation work. But these are projects beyond twenty-six, twenty-seven. They haven't been handed over to the Housing Authority yet. And there is uncertainty there because we may be affected by the inclement weather. And towards the end, there may be some loose ends to tie up. So for these sites that have been handed over to the Housing Authority yet. So if you look at the rolling program, by Q two this year, we will be putting this onto the web for public knowledge. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we're still creating the land that will be needed. And we still have to wait until the land production to be completed before we are in a position to tell members the precise timetable for completion. Chairman, Madam Kong asked whether there is any monitoring and coordination. Now, for the operation of the transitional housing, the relevant NGOs will have to submit an audited report for our perusal on an annual basis. Mr. Bu Tang. Chairman, thank you. Two questions. I noticed from the PowerPoint that public housing will be expedited and four to five years down the road, he's very confident about the production. Following on from Mr. Wong Kockin and his change in hand, I'm wondering whether the administration would not redevelop the old districts. We have a toy home estate sixty years old, Wallock Estate also sixty years old. Why don't you redevelop them? If you redevelop these estates, you can transfer them to Calhoun Bay, I want your road and so on. People would be very happy. They have problems like a leakage, COVID spread, spalling and all the rest of the problems. This is really worrying the residents and and they are five to six stories high, a lot particularly high. If you can redevelop these estates, you would be able to put the plot ratio to much better use, going to have some much better cost effectiveness. So I'd like to make this recommendation to the secretary. I hope that you will take this on board because I'm also worried you will wait until they are one hundred years old before you will redevelop them. But second question is in your reply, there are sixty-nine thousand eight hundred people on the waiting list. And they will get the, what I call the rental allowance to the tune of one point one billion dollars. But this is no small amount and you are helping these people who are struggling every day. Now, why don't you talk with the Rating and Valuation Department to carry out enforcement work? Now, for these sixty-nine thousand eight hundred people, how many of them are living in SDUs? And are they aware of the fact that there is a piece of legislation that is protecting them in terms of the tenancy, that there will not be any excessive rent hype? How many of them are living in the SDUs? And how can we make sure that the landlords will be pocketing these allowance as a result? Secretary, thanks very much, Mr. Tang, for housing redevelopment. This is something that we're working on. We do have a staggering number of housing estates that are being developed, but our West District, we do have quite a lot of old housing estates that are being developed. We also have the industrial buildings and they're also being redeveloped. So Mr. Tang, you can reassure that we do not spare our efforts in redeveloping public housing estates, but in the course of redevelopment, we have to rehouse the affected people. And depending on the aspirations of the residents, we have to identify a potential redevelopment site before we can rehouse them. And after rehousing, the number of units can be increased substantially. For existing housing states, if their structural integrity is good enough, we will continue with them. But in terms of redevelopment, this is always our concern. As to the sixty-nine thousand eight hundred people that are waiting, who are getting the allowance, we can make available the Rating Valuation Department's information to the member. We can send us the department to follow up if need be. Mr. Tang and the follow-up, yes, Chairman. Welcome, the fact that we should have for the tenancy control and and these allowance, we should, the two should go in tandem. I talked about Wallock Estate, Troy Home Estate, it's sixty years old. You may say that they are of good quality, but we have received reports on a daily basis that there is a concrete spalling happening every single day. Now, the circumstances is going to be redeveloping these two housing estates that I mentioned. Secretary, thanks very much, Mr. Tang. For the existing public rental housing, we do have the maintenance and structural inspection on a regular basis. Perhaps I can defer to the Deputy Director to follow up on this. Chairman, in terms of maintenance of public housing estates, we do have two plans. The first one is the household maintenance program. If there is any spalling and any other problems, so they can rank the the Management Office and this will be fixed. The second is the comprehensive maintenance program that the Housing Department will be visiting the targeted building. They will be going from door to door and inspect these housing units and carry out appropriate maintenance work. These comprehensive maintenance work will happen every five years for these old buildings. We visit, visited about eighty percent of the housing estates. Mr. Tony J. Chairman, thank you. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on the opening remarks. Those who are living in inadequate housing. Are you trying to help those in inadequate housing by offering them the transitional housing in two thousand twenty? Since the inception, you had ten thousand units and the number is going up to something like twenty thousand now. From the replies to H B H O O three. There are twenty-three hundred units already in operation and forty-two hundred under construction. And next year, there will be more than ten thousand that will be completed for operation. Since you are trying to render assistance to these people who are living in poor atrocious housing conditions, timing is everything. It's been two years now. Has the secretary looked into the situation to see where you can expedite things, where do you spend the most time on and how you need to expedite the construction time? This point of one second. About the public housing estates. Has the secretary looked into this? Also, my understanding is that if a site has been zoned as public rental housing, the Development Bureau will be doing the site formation and providing infrastructure. Isn't it faster for the THB to take over the coordination? I think that was a safe the coordination problem between the two bureaus. Have you ever considered this? Secretary, thanks very much, Mr. Tony J, for the question and the comments. In the course of building public rental housing, there are two aspects. The first one is the land production and identification of land. Mr. J has got a point that work is really enormous for new development areas of a large part of land. The site formation is not really geared for public housing, but also for the entire development of the district. It would be far better and more comprehensive for the Development Bureau to do the coordination work. For individual sites reserved for public rental housing, we do take over the work and it is the Housing Authority that would be doing the coordination. And we seek funding from PWSC and DFC to get the funding for the site formation. I'm sure members sitting on the PWSC must be fully aware of these procedures. If there are situations like this, we will be proceeding in accordance with this process.
In terms of our construction time needed for transitional housing, it depends on the nature of the project. It depends on the nature of the project for a conversion of existing building blocks. Considerably, considerable less time would be required. For size with a build infrastructure by using M I C method. Less time would be required. The bottleneck lies in identification of suitable land. Once land has been identified, it doesn't take long. Now, we are grateful for the developments bureau as well as a private land owner to for referring as to the both sides to us. Yeah, we'd like to follow up on secretary's point. About the timetable for building transitional housing. Was a lot of time spent on public consultation and dealing with local objection. Was there any resistance in that regard? Thank you, Mr. Tony Chair for your follow up. Yes, for individual transitional housing projects. The there was some delay because of public consultation and local opposition. A lot of work has been done during the P P C, T P C stage as well as communication with stakeholders. So the progress was satisfactory, but we will try our best to compress the timetable further. Mr. Michael Tian. Yes, secretary. Question five eight four. Now, it says the task force has been spearheading NGOs to roll out transitional housing projects to alleviate the plight of those living in inadequate housing and families who have been waiting for PRH for a long time. So transitional housing is, as transitional housing is target. Advocants waiting for PRH allocation and it is time limited in nature. According to the paper, more than eighty, or more than eighty percent of applicants for transitional housing are waiting for PRH. So there are some twenty percent people who are ineligible, who are not applying for PRH. Is it because they are not eligible for PRH? I believe these are families of needs. Transitional housing, however, is of a time limited nature. So after the tenancy period ends, where would they go? And it would, how would you deal with these families who are not eligible for PRH? Thank you, Mr. Michael Tian is right. The service targets of the transitional housing units are those families who have been waiting for PRH allocation for more than three years. We understand that some people may be experiencing a short term financial difficulties or family problems and they need a temporary housing. And the service principle of some NGOs, particularly caters for a single, for one person household. So we want to be more flexible in offering help to them. We hope that during the time that they are residing in transitional housing units, they can find other housing. Now, for some projects like Light B. This NGO would sign a social contract with the tenants. Hoping that in two years' time, through saving or upskilling, the tenants can meet their own needs and find alternate housing after the two year tenancy period. Thank you. So do you mean that these families are not eligible for PRH in the long run? And they are experiencing a short term housing problem, so they are not applying for PRH? And you are giving them a temporary help? So when the tenancy period ends? If the problem persists? Would you allow them to renew their contract? Secretary, thank you, Chairman. I believe it depends case by case for families who need transitional housing. If we have the capacity, we would allocate units to them. Of course, we welcome tenants who leave the units after a short period of time. After two years' time, if they still have housing problems and the project is still in operation. I believe the NGO will make suitable arrangements. It depends on whether they are eligible to get the transitional housing units. Now, housing policy should be fair. Now you would assess the financial ability of families if they don't have the means of a private housing, then they would be eligible to queue up for PRH. Now for transitional housing, they have the financial means, but they cannot afford a private housing. So if they, if the problem persists, who will be the one to judge whether they should be given transitional housing units? Would it be up to the NGOs solely or will the government also have a say? Well, I believe that there is a misunderstanding. If they have the financial means and then they leave the transitional housing units, then I don't think the NGOs will renew their tenancy contract. Mr. Edward Lau. Thank you, Chair. Secretary, I would like to follow up on your opening remarks. As we all know, housing problems are serious in Hong Kong and we need to speed up identification of lands and delivery of housing units. The Development Bureau has announced a proposal to streamline planning procedures. Now, for the T H B in terms of housing unit's delivery. Do you have any measures in place to speed up our delivery and by how much? For example, would you consider adopting M I C for all housing projects? And you mentioned design and build procurement model in your opening remarks. So concerning D and B. What is the standard of of the tender process, which you focus on speed or quality? Thank you, Mr. Edward Lau. Concerning delivery of housing, public housing projects, we are doing our best to compress the timetable. I would like to invite Mr. Stephen Leng to give a detailed reply. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Lau. Now, two questions on M I C. Like we said, there are three projects adopting the modular integrated construction method. For example, for instance, the project at Ducking Street as the Anderson Corey Bay. And the projects are in Tongchung. So we would adopt the M I C model on a trial basis for these three projects. And they are going to be twenty thousand housing, public housing units that builds with the M I C method. I hope, we hope that the trade can identify ways to compress the timetable by using M I C method. By how much? It depends on the project, but we think the M I C would definitely help to shorten the construction period. In terms of a D and B, there are two obstacles to overcome. First, the number of housing units delivered has increased by much. Existing manpower we have may not be able to cope with the additional quantity, so we may have to rely on the private markets to make up for the shortfall. Now, the benefits of using the D and B model is that with a contractor's undertaking at design and construction at the same time, synergy can be achieved. The contractors can draw reference to the experience in design and construction and achieve synergy and shorten the construction period. It is a great opportunity. And also on procurement of raw materials and deployments of manpower, there will also be synergy. So we think that we can shorten the construction time by three to four months. And I hope, we hope that we can shorten the construction period by using different methods. Thank you. So you mentioned four to five months for D and B. What about M I C? You said it would be faster, but by how much? And you said decide and build a model as taken up by a private contractors and the housing and the buildings department. What will be the cost difference? Now for M I C. For those projects under the preview of the H A, we are using the pre fabrication model. In terms of the time saved. We have to wait and see. Of course, we want to save as much time as possible. Now for D and B. We want the encouragement, we want to provide incentives to contractors to further shorten the timetable. For example, by increasing the likelihood of winning a tender if they can compress the timetable. When a contract is awarded. We understand that more manpower is needed, so the price will be higher. However, we can, on the other hand, we can save manpower on the housing authorities aside. So the building costs will not be too expensive. Because of the synergy, the price may be driven lower. Of course, we would welcome that. Mrs. Sally, thank you, Chair. Chair, I'm grateful for the secretary's reply to Miss Alice Max's question. The F T U considers that the housing pressure or the housing cost for the public is simply too high. We are of the opinion that every family should have dignity and live in adequate housing. So would the government set a timetable to bid farewell to SDUs or subdivided units? When can we achieve and the, when can the government fulfill its promise of a three years waiting time for PRH? In setting the timetable to bid farewell to SDUs. I want to know specific measures to achieve that goal. I don't believe that simply by using the tenancy control on SDUs, we can solve this problem. There are still a lot of shortcomings, a lot of flaws under the tenancy control ordinance. For example, there is no regulation in terms of rents per square feet or square foot. Now, we are promoting transitional housing. Does the, will the government set a standard rent for transitional housing units? Now, the rent ranges range from one thousand two hundred dollars to five thousand dollars. Now, finally, on isolation facilities. After the epidemic has passed, will the government convert isolation facilities into transitional housing units? To meet the home demand. Thank you.
Secretary, three questions there. Thanks very much and thank you, Mr. For his concerns and for the people of Hong Kong. About the isolation facilities. We've already said that if the citizens can be converted into transitional housing, we're sending follow up on this by the time the pandemic has eased and we do not need these isolation facilities anymore, we will deal with them accordingly. There is a standard for the transitional housing at one time. It cannot be any higher than one quarter of the household income. Except in exceptional circumstances, that we would have regard to the financial situation of the household. We don't have any fixed rental. In terms of the demand. Other part of those in inadequate housing in the long term, housing strategy will have included these. So in the coming ten years, we will be able to identify a land to provide for three hundred thirty thousand public housing units. If everything goes smoothly in terms of land identification and construction, we should be able to meet the demand of those who are on the waiting list as well as those who are living in inadequate housing. So the objective of eradicating SDUs as long as we can proceed according to the roadmap, I'm sure that that would be able to address these. And if I'm saying no chairman. Dr. Stephen Wong. Dr. Wong. Chairman, thank you. Secretary, by your pardon. I'd like to follow up on the question raised by Ms. Kong on twenty fifth of January. Together with Dr. President Long and Ms. Kong, we wrote to the secretary to ask for more information about the production of housing in the future. It's been a few months, we haven't received any replies. Are you going to give us a reply, Mr. Secretary? Second. I wrote in to the special finance committee, but for some reason, there wasn't any reply forthcoming. So I'm going to follow up on T H B H O O five. As the housing production on the part of the housing authority and the progress thereof. I wrote in with a question from twenty fourteen, how much of the housing production has experienced delay? We have a delay of twenty thousand units. This is a staggering number. The other issue is Addison Road, Corey I S one site. In twenty twenty. It's been put back from twenty twenty four to twenty four twenty five because of the impact arising from the neighboring site. So my question is, what is the progress regarding the construction? My understanding is that the tenant contract has already been issued. Our visual inspection shows that you are building up, building the ground floor. Now, can you expedite the progress instead of twenty twenty four twenty five? Can you refer back to twenty two twenty three? Now, there's the original program. Secretary, thanks very much, Mr. Wong or Dr. Wong. I can defer to Mr. Leng. This specific question, I think that my colleague can address that. As to the public housing production, we do have the rolling ten year production program. As to the public housing production, we do have the rolling ten year production program. If you look at the program twenty twenty two twenty three, you get to see how many units are for rental housing. How many are for subsidized sale from the Housing Authority, all the details are sent out there. That we have this year by year. And we have the financial year from April to March. If there is a delay of one month, then it would be put back to the following year. You may get the feeling that it's been put back by twelve months, but that is not really the case. We have the rolling program. Some of them may experience. A delay of a couple of weeks and they will go into the next financial year. In fact, I have replied to Dr. Wong's question, maybe I didn't answer in the way that there was to the satisfaction of Mr. Wong. I am only delighted to invite Dr. Wong to my office and discuss the issue and see what can be followed up. Addison Road, I S one site, Mr. Wong. Chairman, thank you. Thanks very much, and Dr. Wong, regarding this I S one site on Addison Road, as you understand. The quarry, we are dealing with the infrastructure work. We have to coordinate with the C E D D to make sure the work is smooth. Like, for instance. We had some arrangement with the C E D D about the location of the inquest and egress. But after certain period of time, the C E D D might have some consideration. Or they may need some time before they can make available the information. Then the inquest may experience some delay to I S one site. So we have to coordinate with one another. And we have to put ourselves into the other shoes and to make sure that everything will be smooth. And that's one of the reasons that Dr. Wong must be aware that. Inclement weather is something that is that is beyond our control. Like the secretary said a moment ago, the delay may not be as much as a year, maybe just a couple of months. And that would be enough for it to be. Shifted to the following year. As to whether we can expedite the progress, we will try. But as far as we, as soon as we are into the superstructure work, it would be dematerial for us to expedite the progress. Because the timetable is very tight to start with, that we will try to recover the last time. But we will definitely work on this. Doctor Wendy Hong. Chairman, thank you. I am more concerned about those who are too rich to make it on to the P R H waiting list. But too poor to afford the private housing that don't pay them is major issues, in particular, younger generation. They don't have that much of disposable income that you have on this progressive. Payment mortgage. And this would reduce the burden, the financial burden upon who are getting all the housing letter. At least for the early years, I think this can be applied to not just to the H O S, but also to the private sector. For those who don't have enough savings. They are the these up and coming people that they don't have enough savings and that would be good idea for them. Now, will the secretary be. Providing this scheme or introducing this innovative scheme, not just to the H O S, but also to the private sector market. To provide them more flexibility there. Thanks very much. But this progressive payment mortgage. It depends what perspective you're looking at it from normally for the mortgage, people pay a fixed amount. And that's the typical kind of mortgage payment. The buyers can discuss with the banks and to to have this progressive payment mortgage. And I say, they. They would raise the mortgage repayment progressively to pay less in the beginning years and more for the for the following years. This can be discussed with the banks, the miss, Dr. Hong referred to the progressive payment mortgage. This is something floated by an NGO. If you buy a private unit, you buy half of the ownership. And you you take out a mortgage on the part of this fifty percent, the other fifty percent would be in the ownership of the developer. That that's another form of progressive payment mortgage. And there may be some ownership or legal issues. For example, if the buyer experiences financial. Distress, who will have the ownership of the the unit? For private sector or for the public sector? If there is anything, they can assist people to go over the housing that we will keep our options open. So for the progressive payment mortgage, we are prepared to to look at this option. As to the the size of the ownership, I think we have to look into this. Let's see whether Dr. Hong has got anything to follow up. Doctor Hong, any follow up? Chairman, like the secretary said, there are so many technical and legal issues. It would be hard for the private sector to spearhead this. I think we need to bring the government in for the young people. They are up and coming people in the. In their career, and this would provide them an additional choice. Secretary, thanks very much, Doctor Hong, for the follow up. Now, for progressive payment arrangement, it would be easier to handle now for progressive mortgage. I think we have to get the technical and legal issues sorted out first. But anyhow, we are prepared to follow up for the public sector, now for the private sector, I think you have to. We have to deal with the the mortgage corporation because there is an element of risk for the banking sector. I certainly will have a word with the F S T B on this one. It's the Jeffrey Lam. Chairman, thank you. If we can break down the barriers, any people would would be able to thrive. I think we have to prioritize the infrastructure, whatever we do before population intake. We have to have all these facilities available. The Housing Authority and Housing Society will be providing twenty four thousand units in the coming years. And they are the home stretch of the land production process. And my question for the secretary is this. In identifying land for housing production, how can you develop the. Infrastructure, like. The network for traffic and also for pedestrians. I'm sure that if you can make this connection, it would send it be improving the upward social mobility. That we have put this question many, many times, you may say that this is going in tandem. I don't think you should be stuck with the old mode. I think infrastructure should be prioritized as much as possible. And also redevelopment of public housing. Couple of years ago, Mr. Secretary, we've been to Shaken May Estate together with you. And in fact, a lot of these sites can be harnessed for the production of new rental housing. While you demolish the one, and we are suggesting that the point ratio be increased. We can see that the housing blocks are getting really old and decrepit. And not just in Shaken May. We have cited quite a number of housing estates and that are really aging. Do you work on the basis of the age of the the blocks? What criteria do you use to develop these blocks? Thank you.
Secretary, thank you, Chair. Concerning the construction of public housing estates, I would like to reassure Mr. Jeffrey Lam. Now, for housing estates of a lot of a sizable scale with large population. During the redevelopment process, we consider the transport support. For example, in Tongchung, we would make sure that there is a. Transport, traffic interchange, as well as a car park constructed during the redevelopment project. It would look at the. The capacity of the transport net network and the public housing estates. For the Tongchung Estates, we will build a new P one road. With the highways department so that it will be delivered together with the housing estate project. In terms of a redeveloping public housing estates. I understand that members. Would like the H A and the H S to redevelop public housing estates on a mass, on a massive scale. However, we have a lot of redevelopments of projects pending already. We have to attach priority to projects like Mr. Young, the Deputy Director of Housing said. We will have to conduct. Repairing projects to ensure the 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 safety of the structure. We will consider the population growth if it is. Of economy of scale, we will. Engage in those projects. But actually, you don't have to identify a new size every time in some public housing estates that they are. Spot venues and they are unused community activities at center. You can simply use that's part of the estates. And also for some projects, you have to. De cans some existing residents, and it is not fair for you to put them at the at the end of the queue. So can you adopt a flexible approach in dealing with the residents affected? Chair, we have to relocate the existing residents when we redevelop a public housing estate. So they would not be put at the end of the queues. So for. Families at the top of the queue. When the redevelopment projects, their waiting time would be prolonged. Because inevitably, we have to relocate, we have to relocate the existing residents and we and the waiting time would be lengthened. So after Mr. Jeffrey Lam's turn. Everyone has had a first round. A member is requesting a second round. For members who have not put the questions yet. Does anyone wants to have a first round? Please raise your hands if you do. If not, then I will invite the the members for a second round, Mr. Michael Tian, five minutes as well. Thank you, Chairman. I don't need to have five minutes. To follow up on my previous question. For transitional housing projects spearheaded by NGOs. Twenty percent of the. Units would be. Open for application by. People who have short term financial difficulties. Now, for those compared to those waiting for public rental housing units. The ratio shouldn't be one to four. The perception is that the twenty percent. Families ineligible for. P R H. Who cannot afford that private housing, it seems that the percentage is too high. On the other hand, not all transitional housing projects are spearheaded by NGOs. So do NGOs account for minority? That's why the government considers that twenty percent from their deliverables would not. Be too high a percentage for those who are not eligible for P R H and cannot afford a private housing. Would you consider lowering the percentage to three or five percent, Secretary? Question about is the ratio. Allow me to clarify a point. The twenty percent mentioned by Mr. Michael Tian, at first, that's the cap. Second. The twenty percent households are not necessarily with financial means. For example, some are grassroots families waiting, having waited for public housing for. For a period of short of three years' time, shouldn't we help them? And also, there are people living in S D U's that they cannot afford the rental increase. So we have to address the concerns of all these people. Thank Mr. Michael Tian for your concern. If we allow people with financial means to to be allocated to transitional housing, I don't think that is desirable as well. I think that would be a rare case. Maybe I misheard you, you said these are people with financial means, but they temporarily cannot afford the private housing. No, that's not what I said. That's the issue about communicating via Zoom. However, a one fourth is that's a too high proportion. There are only eighty percent of the applicants eligible for P R H, there are as much as twenty percent applicants who are not eligible for P R H. So you set aside that twenty percent as a cap for those so called. Families who are suffering but not eligible for P R H, is that percentage too high? Now, I would invite Mr. Stephen, sorry, Mr. A Dr. Raymond So, the Undersecretary, because he's responsible for transitional housing. Yes, what about? What's about amending the eligibility for P R H? That might be a better way to go. Thank you, Mr. Tian, for your follow up question. As mentioned by the secretary. The twenty percent allocation quota, they are eligible for P R H. It is just that they haven't, they haven't been waiting for P R H for three years. So the twenty percent households haven't. Waited for three years, maybe two years, but they are also people in need. The NGOs will also look at the the financial. Income of the household, because as I said, the criteria would be thirty five percent of the house, family of the household income. If the household income is too high, they won't be eligible. Unless there is a sudden drastic change experienced by the family so that they have a short term urgent housing need. So you mean that they are eligible for P R H, but they haven't waited for three years yet. So maybe you should change the three year waiting. Criteria. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through. You are muted, please unmute yourself, Mr. Michael Tian. We can't hear you for the last bit, Mr. Michael Tian. Sorry, I mean. If most of them are eligible for P R H, it's just that they haven't waited for three years. So maybe you should change the criteria of three years waiting time for P R H. Otherwise, it would be confusing, three years, twenty percent and so on. So if someone. Has been waiting for four or five years, they can't get an allocation. But someone who has only waited for one or two years would be allocated with a unit, so that's unfair. Thank you for your follow up question. Now, the twenty percent is just a cap. In. Leasing transitional housing units. leasing, the transitional housing units, many, most likely, there would be over subscription. So usually, the twenty percent cap would not be used up. However, in your reply, you said twenty percent. That's not a cap, that's the real figure. So maybe that's an misunderstanding as well. The twenty percent is the cap. In reality, it is not as high as twenty percent, and that's not mandatory. As we said, we have some sixty nine thousand eight hundred households getting cats. They are also waiting for PRH. If they apply for transitional housing units, the number is not sufficient as well. So that's why we are prioritizing those who have waited for three years. For special cases, I think Mr. Michael Tian is also very kind. He wants to help those who need help as well, but the number is small. So is that just a cap? Is it true that maybe ninety percent of your applicants have waited for, have waited for PRH for three years? Chairman, what about I reach out to Mr. Michael Tian after the meeting? So this is a very specific question. So maybe you should make a specific arrangement with Mr. Michael Tian subsequently to the meeting to explain it to him. Thank you. Next, Mr. Tong Lee Che. Thank you, Chair. I would like to follow up on transitional housing. An issue of many members concerned. It takes time to be allocated a permanent house. Of course, we want more transitional housing units available. Now, the now you have approved an amount of sixteen point six billion dollars. So next year, you estimate that the number will be increased to one hundred and seventeen thousand units. So there are still a shortfall of three thousand units. Now, as the name suggests, they are transitional in nature. So the land may be may have to be resumed and those structures may have to have been moved. So are we still identifying additional sites for transitional housing? I think we need to have the additional resources in reserve. Second, we are concerned about the prolonged waiting time for PRH as well as the number delivered. Now, the ten year housing program is is on a rolling basis. It is subject to review annually. Like you mentioned, there will be three hundred and thirty thousand units in ten years. If they are delivered, the waiting time would be shortened to less than three years, ideally. So shouldn't we begin to think about shouldn't we think beyond ten years? The number is of a rolling nature. Now, we have an aging population and people want to live in larger flats. So would the governments begin a study on how to achieve these goals? You need a forward looking plan because we need land resources to provide more flats. Secretary, thank you, Chairman. Concerning the aging problem mentioned by Mr. Tong Lee Che in delivering public housing units, there has been communication between the LWB, the DBB and THB. Five percent of the total GFA would be reserved for social welfare facilities. That's a policy to care for the elderly. The LWB will give us the recommendations in terms of welfare.
Chairman, I talked about aging population. I'm sure you must be aware of this. Senior citizens, they may need more space for the wheelchair, for the disabled people. I'm wondering whether you would consider this as well. Secretary, that's true, Chairman, for the elderly couples or singletons, I visited them. And let's say, an elderly couple, they're living in one P or two P units. We may be dealing with a seventy year old and an eighty year old. It would be hard for the autogenarians to scale up the bunk bed. And it would be a good idea for them to be provided with a unit for two or three people. It would be easier for them in wheelchair. And so it would provide a more decent, more comfortable living environment for them. So in the course of allocating the units, we will deal with the situation on a case by case basis. As to transitional housing, in this financial year, we have earmarked three point three billion dollars for this. We will be moving in this direction. We will get on with the twenty thousand units first. If there is further development, we will work hard on it. Mr. Dorian Kong for the second round, please. Chairman, thank you.
TXB H O O three is my question regarding the transitional housing. If I may turn to Annex one regarding the pilot scheme for subsidizing the use of hotel and guest houses as transitional housing. At the Lutheran Association, it is only sixty four percent. And Lingnam Medicines Charitable Foundation Limited, the utilization rate is only thirteen percent. Why such a low utilization rate? And in terms of subsidy, now for the Lingnam Best Medicines Charitable Foundation, the subsidy is ten billion dollars. And only ten people stand to benefit. Are we spending ten billion dollars or what for sure? I'm trying to make sure the money that we spend is going to be well spent. Now, for these hotels and guest houses being used for transitional housing, how do they fix the rental? Who's going to fix the rental? Secretary, if somebody would like to apply for the transitional housing, is there any centralized mechanism where they can make the application? Or do they have to shop around? And approach the charitable organization? I just, like you said, Chase said, some people may be wheelchair bound. If there is a centralized mechanism, would be easier for them to be matched with the right unit. Is there any centralized system there? Right, I defer to Undersecretary So. Thanks very much for the question, Ms. Kong. For this hotel and guest house rooms, pilot scheme is started last year. Ms. Kong referred to the specific projects and the occupancy rate. I'd like to make some clarification that they have to advertise or they would advertise through their own website. And the rental commencement may not be exactly the same. And they can start advertising for the tenants. And once the tenancy agreement is reached, the tenants can move in. So the date can predate the actual commencement of the tenancy. At any part of the program, the utilization rate may look low, but it doesn't necessarily be the case. And the occupancy would start counting when someone has already moved in. But there is always a turnover during the turnover period. The occupancy rate may be less than one hundred percent. But in fact, we may have benefited more than one households. Also, the rental of the transitional housing, according to the principles, the rental cannot be more than twenty five percent of the household income. And every time they come in with the application, we would have regard to the rental as the basis for our subsidies. So we do have some guidelines there. As I said a moment ago, on the website for transitional housing, all the units available for rent are listed there. Any interested parties can, depending on their preferences, in terms of location and the characteristics of the units, make the application accordingly so that they can have the units that meet their needs. Ms. Kong, if I may follow up, Chairman. If these people don't have access to the computer, how else can they get access to the information? They may be just a salary workers. How can they get access to the information? For the Lingnam Medicines Charitable Foundation, has so ten million been dispersed for ten people? I haven't heard your reply specific enough. Right, for the Lingnam Medicines Charitable Foundation, a ten point oh six billion dollars has been dispersed. It doesn't mean that all the money has been spent. It would depend on the occupancy rate per month before the money would be made available. So this is the total disbursement amount. As to the amount that is going to be spent, it's not up to that level yet because we'll have to look at the level of occupancy before the money would be made available. Right. The organization would get in touch with the relevant people through their means that they are very good at social service. And they can get in touch with the potential applicants. So things are pretty smooth in this regard, and they can get in touch with the relevant people. If I may, Chairman, just a few words. Through the NGOs and charitable organizations, we are getting in touch with the needy families through these networks. So for transitional housing, prior to occupation, the people in the, there is a shortlisting process in the district that you mentioned, the Lingnam Medicines Charitable Foundation. If you look at Annex three, they started advertising from mid February. The paper is prepared in March, so it just started with the advertising. So the number of people who registered seemed to be on the low side. Thank you. Any further questions regarding housing? If not, we bring this item to close, and the next item will begin at five fifteen.